He's down putting in uh.
Down the hall, yeah.
Doing uh.
He's putting D board.
Ship lock, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so thanks, thank you. I'll check on that.
Yeah, it's just I had to put some stuff in the fridge for tomorrow and I was like.
There's just still stuff everywhere?
There is covered, there'll be nothing in the cupboard, like one of them's all over, I mean, you know.
They haven't put anything away, really?
It doesn't, no, it doesn't look that way. I didn't really look around too much.
All right, all right, two, three, four, five. All right, six o'clock, please rise for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, native and equal, with liberty and justice.
Hey, also gonna read our district mission statement and the partnership with the communities. The mission of the Dorfland and Fulton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect. So they become self-directed, responsible, lifelong learners. We'll call um Ronnie Ting and Lori Laura Item are weren't able to be here this evening, so five board members are present. As well as our superintendent Hunstead and our um early childhood specialists, our lead over there, Roseanne Olmos. And we've got John Jacobson, our tech director. So, and guests, welcome. All right, do we have a motion to, first of all, any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, nope.
No changes to the agenda, do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, rebel recognition, uh, no comments, uh, any rebel recognition?
Um, I think the kindergarteners, well, I know the kindergarteners very good, I think last week. And I'd love to kindergarteners to never do it, thank you very much. They are very organized and. They're just great, patient, kind of people, so I applaud them.
And to all the teachers who chose to do the don't.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that too.
Like it's very jacked to hear all the things and however they give bloods and how many thrones they have and so all the community members will also donate. So those kids have that opportunity, but.
Let's hope nobody gets a cold now. We have an employee issue tomorrow.
All right, well, thank you, it was always fun to hear. Uh, let's start with six point one, Roseanne, you're up for early childhood report. We have this lovely new stand that came in. A podium. Look at you, the first one to use it.
Yes.
First one to use it.
Sign it.
Early, Roseanne handed out uh, early childhood.
I was just gonna say, I handed out information for you, not generally to our work force, but I just go like that as part of our detailed numbers of um. How many do we have in our classes, um, all kinds of lists on here, what care professionals are in which room. On the second major information on our escape class and of course early childhood screening, uh, which are all areas that I foresee a watch over from this year. So this year I have to make things relatively smoothly with our transmission of unpacking classrooms, setting up classrooms. Um, taking two classrooms of things and trying to find out amongst the three current classrooms that we're using. Um, things done very, very smoothly, uh, trying to find a base of our school packaging with the blue everyone's like. What, the little leafy razors or there's something that was like, okay, we'll find them and we'll be finding after that. But we eventually find them, so um, did some type of coordinating our classrooms of where we want to put everything, making sure that it's a space that's inviting and welcoming to the children as well as the families. And the learning environment for all kids that are experiencing. Uh, our early childhood screening, we started out like we always do that first week of September, but um, spending forty minutes screening our early childhood students, trying to get in as many of our school readiness as our tots. Children will be coming for the whole rounds if they haven't been screened yet, um, so we screened, just to follow that first week, we screened thirty-five children that first week. Um, and then now I've been prioritizing looking at how many kindergarteners and educators we find, we know that I didn't. Fifth A, like I said before last year, uh, getting those kids screened, um, contacted all the kindergarten school staff last week and I just. Said here for list of children that I think who have not been screened yet, women in kindergarten, uh, do you have any concerns about any of these children, so prioritizing. Um, any children that any of our teachers may have concerned about, so um, I think I got it. Two or three of those screened on last week and today I just screened another three kindergarteners this afternoon, even looking together, I'm gonna read tomorrow afternoon and finish up on Wednesday. We have enough a couple more days this week, so I'm gonna send any of those kindergarteners to them through the classroom, so making sure we get all those completed and done and integration back to the teachers. Um, before that, it's possible to manage that time. Excited to have our fourth classroom, um, Shannon has uh, been enjoying our, our paints and our papers, we make our runs into the district, the current district office area. Uh, that's, that's large, I don't know if you've ever heard of that, that this house is in, has been um, here large for more of our supply, we're hoping to be making um. Over a journey of our paper repaves and whether our bases or options are smaller, those colors will be smaller, so we've been in the. Into the district house, this is where you see most supplies here and there and um, looking forward to when we do have that fourth classroom, so we have um, two those for our air goods to be able to set up offices. Or having um, some other activities, a parachute to be able to be with our baby kids, not building blocks, some little big toys that don't fit as well as our regular.
Any questions for me?
I just wanna say thank you for your patience, because uh, I did talk to Dennis today, uh, that we just need to get out an M E A or close to it, because they need the classroom. And we need to get away from each other too. Um, it's just time, right? It's like anything, we need, that space is supposed to use for kids and the kids that are in there, it's time for them to move up, so anyway, thank you for your patience.
My office, I know my friend, I work a lot of our classes right now, so I know a teacher may have asked, what do you get an early child screen at that school last year? Can you pull that out? In, in the box.
Okay.
Just one of the ones we have, that other support classroom and I have an office area, it is really great to have everything at one site, a whole of our hands without having all of our classroom at one site, not being at two different sites.
Yes, for sure.
It's just really nice if uh, someone needs to pay for a back support or if an emergency comes up, then they'll call a whole inside thing, they'll keep up between the different classrooms or parents and be able to share and help. So it's, it's worked out very smoothly, transitioned all of that in one site.
Glad to hear that, that's awesome. Thank you, Roseanne. All right, six point two food service report, which will be our superintendent.
Yep, here I am, um, and I'll stay here if it's okay with you guys. I won't go to the podium. Um, so Tammy has kinda taken this role on here in the interim. Ordering things, Tammy Spear, uh, our food service person and Glendon, our head cook, um, she's done a great job, her and I have had conversations weekly. Um, and anyway, I asked her today, I said, hey, do you wanna come and do that report? I asked her last week and she goes, let me think about it, and then today I said, hey, did you, yeah, did you just do that? So anyway, she said there's nothing special to report, they love their new kitchen, they love the two lines, they get so many kids through that time. Uh, they're excited about the door site to get that done over M E A, they're gonna come in and get all that set, uh, or most of it, there's a few little tweaks that we're gonna have to wait into the following week, but. Food service uh, in Dorf is just gonna be, like they said, instead of having all these moving parts, we're gonna just be set and we should be good, so they're excited about those things that are happening. Um, the cooler and the freezer will get completed in Dorf, those things matter as well, so overall, they just said it's been a, a crazy start, just because of everything's new. Um, but are very happy with their new facility. Um, yeah, so overall, I guess it's, she said she's really happy with how things are going, uh, and just another piece of that. Uh, part of my conversation with her today was if she wanted to interview for the food service director, because we did get an application last week. Uh, we're gonna visit with the lady tomorrow afternoon. Um, three o'clock, three thirty, I think, the interview, somewhere in there, um, somebody that has some experience, so we're gonna have that conversation tomorrow, Tammy said to go ahead and interview this person. And she said, I'm good where I'm at, so if this person is somebody you wanna bring on, I'll support her and, and all that too. Um, which is super, Tammy's been nothing but positive and helpful, um, canality here too, and Glendon, they've been running that in work a little bit, moving some food and whatnot, so. Just really appreciative of their patience, uh, to start this year and her willingness to take on some of this additional role until we can figure it out, so hopefully tomorrow is. That interview goes well and things turn up, so anyway, questions about food service?
Thank you. Six point three, board committee reports. David, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, um, the official personnel committee, committee answer, the board meeting. First thing we talked about was the H R, I have a payroll. Difficulties with, to a way to gather a lot of our system setup, yeah, um, Jan probably can talk more about that, it's superintendent's department, so I'm just on that. She can teach greater than, uh, certain. Currently at one dollar less than one, so that's something that I was thinking about doing, and I'd like to change it based on years. Two areas from consideration, um, we've just talked a little bit about these negotiations with N S K. And where they're currently at, we're, uh, right now, I guess, as well, get into this.
Get into that.
So we're really close on the language portion of the contract, just got two areas, we're about to start uh, into negotiations regarding dollars and cents. We're also just looking at uh, some of the duties under, under the contract and how that affects us, so uh, I think right now. We're scheduled for another meeting, um, quick from today, and hopefully we'll get some more progress, we're probably another meeting.
Yeah.
Before we can get that. That's purpose, so, you know, unless I missed anything.
No, I don't think so, um. So, and I guess just I wanna bring up the, the change of rate for pay, we would just need to um, bring our fee schedule and make an addendum.
Yeah.
To that, um, so I should have you write that down, Brooks, we can try to get that on the next agenda.
Yeah, it should be on our next board meeting, we should approve that if that's what people want to do.
Yeah.
I think it's something that, from that committee, that's kind of.
Yeah, we, yeah, we.
It's the subpay, it's a dollar less, and instead of being a dollar less, let's pay him the same, so it's just across the board and it's like, we can't get subs to the guests, it's like, let's just pay him a dollar more.
And most school districts are just paying them what a step one is, and we're not, we're a dollar less, so we wanna be competitive, we want people to wanna come. Um, we thought, you know, that makes sense, let's go ahead and we'll make that addendum, so we'll get that on the next board meeting. Um, anybody else? I had an activities council meeting last Thursday morning, uh, some good discussion, Shannon was there as well. I think some of the primary points that, you know, we wanted to talk about, what's the purpose of the group? Um, you know, this group is gonna talk about facilities, making sure that we're following our policy nine oh two, nine oh five. Um, and making sure that, you know, based on like who has access to the facility, um, you know, making sure that everybody's uh, paying the right fees and it's all being streamlined, so there's no question about. Who, who gives it and who doesn't, you know, there's no favorites, we have a policy on it, so. Uh, fundraising, we just talked, we reviewed the policy and how this is a learning year and, you know, moving forward, hopefully next year. Um, we'll get those September first dates and then January first dates, but, you know, we understand that this year's a learning year for everybody, getting in their forms. Um, talked about Katie's applied for a uh, grant for shields for our weight room, which would be renamed a fitness center. Um, so we will find out beginning of November, but it's, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant that she applied for, and so I'm excited. Yeah, so I'm excited to hear about that. Um, we talked about the new gym areas, what do people wanna see, how do we utilize this space out here? We all agreed that, you know, we, we do, we definitely wanna do some signage, but we wanna take our time and evaluate what we wanna put up there, um, some of the discussion was. Our conference, having our conference flags, you know, celebrating our different schools that would be coming here and, you know, making everybody feel welcome, like. You know, the Heart of Lakes Conference, so I thought that was good discussion, and then we ended with talking about when um, school districts come here to play that are from, what do we decide, over an hour?
Yep.
Over, over an hour away, especially now with um, you know, lack of choices and time that restaurants are open. Um, to possibly feed those student athletes as well as our own after games, so. Definitely had some good discussion on that, and I feel like we, we want people to come to D G F, we want them to be um, comfortable coming here, so, yeah, I thought it was a very productive meeting. We haven't had one in a while, so it was good.
Yeah, and you guys know from the fundraising conversation we had at the board level, um, that kinda triggered this one, so we already talked about some of these things and what you did, so it was a good start.
Yeah.
To, to the fundraising conversations, the, the clubs versus activity account conversation, just a lot of these things, and.
Yeah.
We always want people to leave here happier than when they got here, not because they beat us, but because we fed them.
Yeah, so yeah, it was good, we're meeting again in November, the first week in November in the morning, and uh, we're gonna really go through uh, the policy nine oh two and nine oh five and get uh, that written into. Um, the activities handled, so, yeah, it was good. Anybody else have any?
Well, where do the money come from for feeding those student athletes?
That is a great question, that's what we ask people to come up with some ideas, to figure out.
Right, county sheriffs department.
Um.
Yeah, you'll be serving your nation, you know.
That's what could do.
No, it was a great discussion, we talked about that too, so uh, in my previous life, we had a booster club did it, and it was really neat to see people. Our kids after an event, sit with the team, the other team, and they had barbecues and chips together and water, and people left really happy and.
So for sure, if the booster clubs issued, then we might be.
Well, all of these clubs, right, the clubs wanna get on board, if the parents wanna get on board, it's a way we can give back, work it and the others, it's just, we wanna serve others, so that's what it's about, so it's a good discussion.
And it's all part of it.
Great question, I will tell you, so, um, we have uh, so standing membership is our superintendent. Secondary administrator, Joel O'Keefe was included in that, our A D, Katie Omen, Minnesota High School League Boys and Girls Representatives, um, Boys is Tony Reno. Uh, Katie Omens is the Girls, and we had Title Nine Officers, Tess Tisber, myself being a board member. And then uh, Boys Athletic Head Coach is one three-year term, right now Coach Clark is on it, for Girls Head Coaches, it's Coach Sunday. And then Music, Visual Arts, Speech, Debate and Drama is Anna Knutson, and we actually talked about bringing in um, two students, and the discussion was the uh. National, or the Honor Society, National Honor Society President or Student Council President, they would also like to bring in um, a couple of community members. So Katie had a few names that were given to her and she was gonna reach out to them and see if they had any interest, so, yeah, I think it's a good variety of people. Nice mix of people, absolutely, um, and you know, I, I just wanna bring up too, as far as the um. Out in the hallway, you know, linear signage and everything, and we talked about the, you know, we need to highlight our uh, theater walls as well over there. So we can't just focus on these open bare walls, because there's a lot of open bare wall that way, so, yeah, it was good discussion, I, I really appreciated everybody and everybody was, you know, very uh. Yeah, excited, everybody's excited about the new facility, so, anyway, that's awesome. All right, superintendent report, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah.
I played Tony a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I didn't get through ten, but I brought the three meeting, and then they, they kinda went over by them stuff, but I think most of the meeting was trying to find a coordinator, talking about putting that process together. So, I've been in terms of second standard before, but it's been for, so.
Yeah, it's been kind of a turnover, at least since I've been here, I got here, there was a new one, and then she left, and now they're trying to fill it in, so.
Yeah, so I think most of the meeting was kind of about that.
Perfect, anybody else? All right. Your show.
Nice, okay, well, so in order to start this out right, I, I invited a couple ladies to.
I see that you invited them.
To start this correctly, so if you guys wanna come up, uh, Shelby, and get started and introduce yourselves maybe, because then the public can see you and know who you are. Uh, and this, yeah, they handed out, I think she handed this to you guys, obviously this is in regards to our uh, extra authority or the full authority that we had access to. And which the bond still happened this last week, which was very positive, so Shelby, with that, I'll let you explain.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Hudson, from Alar, this is Jim Chapman, of our, of our, for really happy to be working with the districts, glad we were able to connect with the districts and get this additional authority. Um, we're being a corporate board of authorities, certainly put that into play and finish up some of these projects, which is going to be great, and we're really happy to be meeting with you. Um, so last month, when I was up there, you just approved the resolution, essentially awarding the sale, should it come in with uh, uh, average industry at under five percent? So it did, and so we moved forward with the sale, so, um, we'll just speak a little bit about that.
And, and it has Shannon's pension, uh, sales, the, directly, it's pre-aided, um, on sale as a general location. Well, it's a, um, and more than human is below their, lately, we have a, that, uh, really interesting fact, concerning that I can send a fire official. The twenty nine, twenty percent, uh, sure it is passed, and it's basically a total of, that's the general piece of our report as well, so that is, so have that, I'm knowing in, in one thousand, two hundred and forty-three funds. Uh, uh, November third, on the closing date, uh, and, and something else to note that all this, that accomplished, basically, the people say, um, that's why we're, we're consistent with the last year's, uh, that tax. Yeah, so, um, this, you know, uh, in between the two meetings, and Shannon and Marcus were, um, helping personally, um, credit for a rating call, and so. Um, your district goes with the firm, is that A plus rating, and at the back of the document is the, uh, the rating report, and through that. The second page of that was still, they got from page nine, uh, that's sort of kind of like a spread reading, plus reading, so they send it in, it's painted in. Your staples in gold and French, I'm looking at those horrible, it's kind of, it's just got all of the paint. Um, your good reserves, although a, a little bit low, they thought it was, you know, younger than everything going on, they were, they were comfortable with it right now, and that. And your, um, standard financial management practices, and we talked to Melanie, who is your rating analyst, um, who also is from the area, North Dakota, and North Dakota, so she was real clearly with the area. She just bought it with a crawl, helpful to learn about how, even though you have like management, Marcus and Shannon, you know, with everything, how much they're talking project, how much they've gotten this through the. Um, both the pandemic and this thing project, and that was really cool information for her to just know and feel comfortable of her in that rating, so thanks for all of your extra time and. Um, getting the little rating call and all the things that you do in order to, to bond out on the public record, so. Any questions, just trying to have that.
Well, I just wanna say thank you, you guys do, obviously this doesn't happen without your help, and it also didn't, wouldn't have happened without your, our knowledge or your knowledge of sharing it with us, we didn't know this was available. As many districts are kind of finding out here through your company and through others, so um, that's a big deal, obviously, and we appreciate that support a lot too.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for making Marcus and I look good in that. Because you prepared us, we went through that ahead of time, so we knew kind of what was gonna come at us, and so we were prepared and that was very important, so, thank you.
What's really bothering me is that, for Matt, it was good news from Rob, and I'll see official action tonight, I thought, um, the resolution is ready, I got a word, and then we have a post statement, I am public. That it originally does concern the public market, that you're doing the necessary to keep your investors up to date.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And that's my report, no, uh. Uh, thanks again to others, I just can't tell you much how I appreciate your professionalism, I'm just your support, so it's been good. Uh, food service, I talked about that a little bit already, and that's the interview that we have tomorrow, so I guess we'll have more to share after that, and kind of the direction we're gonna go. Um, whether it's gonna be kind of status quo, or if we're gonna move with a new person, I guess, I want to see, kind of how that works out. Uh, payroll update, um, in the, in the agenda, in the board, sorry, in your board packet, um, there is the proposal from Brady Marks. Had a chance to talk to Brian last Thursday, um, shared a little bit about our needs, more specifically, just him and I talking. Uh, we had a great meeting from Rhonda and I, Amanda and Elise, uh, Elise, sorry, Elise, she's gonna be the one that's probably gonna take on this responsibility, if the board. Um, approves it, um, I'm excited about that, we've talked about it in our negotiations and all of our, all at heart, and. Every employee being different, it's just been a, it's been a work in progress, and it has been since the contract changes, the health insurance changed, and further getting bought out by WEX and. You know, it's, it was the perfect storm and it's hitting us pretty hard, so we need support, the good news from Brian, when I visited with him, Elise has helped Morris area schools out with this transition. She's helped the West Central area, she works for Red Lake County Central and Red Lake, uh, Falls, uh, she's done work with Audubon, um, Fisher Climax, both those districts, so. The good thing is she brings a wealth of knowledge into the payroll, and she's gonna swoop in and help us and get organized and get cleaned up. Um, if it's a direction we wanna stay in, then we'll get into a different negotiation, um, he gave me some options on that. Um, the reason he did this offer is because we're gonna save money this way, he thinks, uh, I told him, maybe. Because I said, there's just a lot of work that needs to get done, and we're gonna need her for more hours than probably what we originally said, just because we gotta get through the. We gotta get through everybody, I mean, we just do, so that, uh, I, I hope that you guys look at that, uh, I'm, I'm all for it, it's something we definitely need to do to move us forward. Again, it's on an hourly rated basis, uh, we gave him, uh, Rhonda put together kind of a template of hours she feels she needs them for. Um, it could be more, it could be less, they had no minimums, no maximums, they're just here to help us push this gap, and that's what I really appreciate it, so if we start all of a sudden feel like, oh, wow, I think we got it. Then we can talk, what, do we need them anymore? Yep, we're gonna keep them on full time, or not full time, but keep them on a. Certain hour contract or whatever, like he does with other districts, but, so we had a lot of flexibility in this agreement. Um, we can also say, you know, after a while, it didn't work out, and that's in the contract too, that we can, we can step out if one party doesn't feel they're being supported, so. It's been a good relationship with our uh, business manager, uh, they have experience again here all over the state, so it just felt kind of natural, given our situation that we're in, so, okay? That's that, uh, construct, construction update, as you can see, the, or I'm sorry, Glendon here, uh, we're getting very close, we're in that ninety-seven percentile, but just like these shades, they're up there, but we can't get them down. Because it's not hooked up yet, and so it's just little things like that here, um, painting that needs to be done, you see glue tape over here on the wall behind me, what a neat touch. Uh, anyway, that's just some of these areas that still have to get fixed, they're touched up, and so I guess that's what's going on in this building, uh. You know, again, ninety whatever percent done, but it's those types of things, as we're kinda, we got a list, um. Troubleshooting or punch list, there you go, it's a punch list that we're going through, Dorf, uh, we're still shooting for M E A. For the district office to move out, so Roseanne can have that room for her preschool kids, um, visited with Dennis before I came over. Um, it's gonna be really close, uh, they're getting the ceiling tile in those offices now, the carpet's gonna be put in on Wednesday. Uh, met with John out there today too, there's a lot of low voltage stuff, so internet, ethernet, uh, phone cabling, we're pulling a lot of that today, so it's all those finishing things. Anyway, and then it's gonna come down to the state says, okay, you can have that back office area, the district office, um, or not, so we're gonna be at the mercy of them a little bit. But next week, uh, the furniture's gonna come in for those areas. Our, our number one issue is we're waiting for the insulated glass for the entrance, so that's getting all framed in. But it's like all of this framed aluminum framing with no glass, well, it doesn't heat things up like weather. So it's gonna have a plywood cover on it until the glass comes, that's November eighth. So once that happens, they said it'll just take a couple days, they'll get it in, and we should be pretty much ready to go. The gym, I walked on the gym floor today, what a nice feeling that was, uh, and they were putting, doing low voltage in there too, they were putting speakers up in the ceiling, they were getting wiring pulled for cameras. Um, but the floor is done, and it looks really nice, bleachers come in next week, they did ask if we wanted to kick the bleachers until later, like Christmas break, they said, no. Bleachers come in next week. They did ask if we wanted to kick the bleachers until later, like Christmas break. I said, no. Get them done. So I hope you guys are good with that. We have girls basketball. It's going to be starting. So our fire is not going to be able to get in quite as quick. Otherwise it could have been in there next week. Um, but no bleachers. So no, let's finish the project. So that's what we're doing. Um, they said anywhere depending on the crew that shows up, because they have crews all over the United States. A good crew shows up, it'll be done in five days. The not good group. You like that language? The group that's not as good, he said it could be up to fourteen days. So I'm going to drive and pick up the good group, picking up where, I think during Ohio, I was kidding. But, uh, so interesting, but hopefully it's going to be done early enough. It's, it's fun stuff. So any questions from the group, from me? On the north side, but we can't do that right until that glass is in. So it's hopefully it's a perfect time, right? It's like right when it starts to get cold and maybe that thing that wipes up that comes out of the sky. And so we're ready for that, I hope. But, uh, there won't be a dump tank out there, I can tell you that. But there was today.
I do have to say that I ran into Dennis the other day. My kid had stumbled and she was hiding in the slot. But it took me a while to find her and made my tour out to school trying to find her. I ran into Dennis. And he gave me a really quick update on everything and was very approachable and remembered my name, which I thought was amazing. And just like was very respectful and I just really appreciated his willingness to answer my questions on the fly while I was.
Yeah. So you guys know this too, because he sent that email to you guys. And he said to me again today, if you guys, anytime, one of you, two of you, all of you want to walk through here in the next two weeks or week or when it's over, you know, he's always available and you guys know that from the past. He's been very accommodating. So anything else?
Just one other thing. So Lakes Country Service Crawford have reached out to the board. They're having their annual, um, board elections. If anybody from this board would like to serve in another board, please give me your name and we will send that in. I kind of thought, no, but.
Yeah, shredder.
Just that I would, just thought I would tell you something.
I guess in closing, I want to just thank others again so they don't have to sit here all night taking their money. Thank you very much. We really appreciate both of you. So.
All right. Look forward to seeing you guys again. Bye bye. All right. That's number seven point one. This is approval of our regular September twenty sixth meeting. Do you have a motion? Motion and a pause or second? Second by Brittany. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Consent agenda. Claims and accounts. David. Okay. Also included is your treasurer's monthly budget report. Um, we have a motion. Motion by Amy. Is there a second? Second by David. Any questions or discussion? Are you no questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point one, new and unfinished business, bond sale. Now this is a resolution, correct?
It is.
The ratify.
Yep, that's that.
So this is just to ratify it. So no, there is no. Okay. Beautiful. All right. Do we have a motion, uh, for the bond sale? Motion by Nicole. Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I. I got to turn my listening ears on. Okay, Nicole, a second. So this is to ratify the award of the bond sale as it was presented um, by elders this evening. We have a motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion or questions? Too many meetings today. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point two. This is a post issuance compliance policy. Do we have a motion? Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. This is the approved, the first reading of the post is post issuance debt compliance policy. And I believe you sent that to us in a email form. I read something.
Yeah, it's just to say that we'll follow. It's not like a new board policy. It's not an M S B A policy. It's to say that we will follow all of our debt and being compliant. So that also came from others. I don't think, is it in the back?
It's in your packet and she had sent it, Brooke had sent it out to us.
Okay.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point three. Um, this is the certified seniority list. This is the second reading of the twenty twenty two, twenty three certified seniority list. Do we have a motion? Uh, motion by Nicole. David, you want a second? Any questions or discussion?
I didn't hear anything. Did you hear anything?
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point four. This is, uh, to approve the payroll contract with Brady Marks is presented. Um, this is again, just to bring up, um, this is an hourly rate. This is not, uh, November through June. This is not a, uh, what do we do when we did the, we actually had a dollar amount, annual. Thank you. So this is just hourly. Um, do we have a motion? Motion by David. Is there a second? Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion?
So I think, and I'm sorry, Lindsay, I think you did say it. It just goes through next June. So again, we can stop at any time, but if after that we feel like, hey, we want to extend this or we want to change it or we want to negotiate it, we can. So I maybe did say that.
Yeah. We've just had a lot of changes and, you know, I just want to give a shout out to Rhonda who's been trying to deal with this and working weekends and nights and trying to figure it out. So I'm very appreciative that they're willing to come and do help, you know, help her.
Yeah. And I don't want to escape around it too much, but she also appreciates it. She's just been reaching out to anybody and everybody. Region one and WEX and just, and Ballers helped her a lot with the other benefits. She needs help and she's asked for it and we're able to do it here hopefully and we can rectify the situation. So.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board committee, um, comments and future agenda items. Uh, the non-certified negotiations are going to be happening next Monday evening at four thirty. Um, so we have that. And then ten point one, we've got our next board meeting on Monday, October twenty fourth at six. And then policy will be, um, meeting after that at the conclusion of the board meeting. Um, as always, if anybody's watching out there, uh, we have jobs available. Please go to our district website. We'd love to have you join our team. Any other comments, team? Anything else? No? All right. Meetings adjourned six thirty eight. Thank you.